Heel, Vinum Shook, current custodian, passed away. It's been about a week. And now, Trina Cook, retired detention administrator, passed away yesterday morning. And we've worked with all of them a good while, and we're going to miss them. All right?
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day. Dear Heavenly Father, that you have created for us on this side of the earth. Lord, we thank you for all the blessings of this life, which we know come from your boundless hand. Dear Heavenly Father, I ask you, Lord, to be with us through this meeting. Lead us, guide us, direct us, help us, Lord, to make decisions. Dear Heavenly Father, there in accordance to your will, and for the better of the people of Avery County. Dear Heavenly Father, just want to hold these families up to you that have lost loved ones. Lord, ask you to be with them, dear Heavenly Father, give them guidance and give them comfort. We thank you, Lord, for everything that you do for us. Lord, we especially thank you for Jesus, because, dear Heavenly Father, through him we have hope. For it's in his name we pray. Amen.
If everyone would stand, we'll ask Dennis Aldridge to lead us in the pledge to our flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to our beloved, our citizens. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move right along to 3.2, called to order our formal session. And, um, proclamations and awards.
Would you not have any?
All right, now we'll come down to the public comment. Would you please raise your hand if you're here to speak in public comment? All right, if you would come to the podium, and we need to, uh... Read our...
Orange. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right, let me...
Hang on just one second.
Okay. Well, all right. Hit from it. All right, before we go into our public comments, I'd like to read to you just a few things to go by. The time limit for any comment to the board is three minutes. Board members are not expected to comment or take any action on matters during public comment. Any individual speaking during public comment shall address the entire board. Any person who wiffly interrupts, disrupts the session will be asked to leave the meeting. If you would like to speak to an attended item, you must sign up. We don't do that no more, do we? Do we something? Okay. You must sign up on the sheet with clerk. Time limit to speak to an attended item is also three minutes. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices. All right, ma'am?
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it. Madam Chair and all the commissioners on, well, thank you for having me today. My name is Elizabeth Erizari de Toro, and I am here on behalf of my son Sergeant John Luke Diaz Erizari, and his wife, Gretchen Diaz, which could not be here due to her health. I'm pleading on both their accounts, because my son, unfortunately, last October pleaded guilty on account for something that he did during his PTSD episode. Came back from Afghanistan in 2020, completely broken, and under the Veterans Administration. So he took full account in full uniform before the judge, and now he's in Mountain View. Unfortunately, in the past year, he's gotten worse with his PTSD, and his wife has also gotten terribly ill. She suffers from something called thrombophilia, which is a coagulation disease. She was hospitalized this past August, and my worry is that three-hour drive every time we come to see him, every two weeks, is a little bit, it's hard. And so, my plea is that we can get him transferred closer to Davidson. The only reason why I say this is because lately he's been sending us strange letters, and in the letters he's saying that he is not going to kill himself, that... And I know he was suicidal, but he was, he's not anymore. That's one of the things that the veterans dealt with him, and I'm so grateful for it, because many times I thought he was going to take his life. But now he's over that, and he has two children, like two grandchildren. And we just have been working with Davidson County as well. I'm going to try to intervene over there with Steve Jarvis, who I know personally, and Sam Lottberg. But I have not heard from the representatives here. And so I'm a little bit worried that if they do a denial, that he would do, that something would happen. And so I'm here to let you know what's going on, to keep you in the loop of things, because I believe that it's very important, even if he is an inmate at the moment. But I still believe that since he has family that does come and travel this way, if there was any way that once you, if there is a denial, that I can get some help in trying to see how we can work to be able to take him back to Davidson. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, come on then.
Well, I just have to comment to that. Twenty-two veterans a day take their own lives. I don't know if everybody's aware of that, but that's fact. There are several organizations that try and deal with that.
Are there anyone else that's here to speak in public comment? If not, we'll move right along with our meeting. And today is the first day in a long time that we've not had any board appointments. All right, and at four o'clock, we do have a public hearing. So we'll move on along till exactly four o'clock, and we'll come back for that. All right, 3.3A, WAMY Community Action Family Development Program update. Lisa O'Meara.
And Madam Chairman, she is not here. I'm going to text her and see, so we may need to amend and move forward.
Let's check in to see. Oh, ladies, I found a hallway door. No, that's her or not.
It's not.
It's not? Okay. Well, we'll move along, and if she comes in a little later, we'll come back to that. All right, 3.3B subdivision approval, Skyrock Phrase 1, lots 1 through 9. Mr. Derrick.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. Do we need to make an amendment to alter the agenda?
No, we don't have to. We can come back.
Okay, we won't make sure.
We can rearrange anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, board. I am here presenting Phase 1 of Skyrock, which is in the Lingle Township. It makes up about nine lots. It has been through all the proper channels, planning board, has met all the subdivision ordinance requirements, and we have a sign off, and be happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Does anyone have any questions?
Do you have an overall master plan for that future development?
We do, yes. Yeah, it's been, on this one, the overall preliminary was all approved, which was the master plan by the planning board. And this one's actually all completed, but due to the timelines on the submitted dates for the plaits, we were going to be about two days short of the surveyers getting everything completed, so we had to split it up some...
Do you know if the whole remainder will be brought in one plant?
The rest of this will be at next month's meeting. It's all in and done, we just couldn't get it in time for them to get it in the mail, surveyors to get done and get it in the mail, so we split it up into this month and next month. But it'll all be coming next month. And the total is about thirty-three lots total in the whole community.
Are there any more questions? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the subdivision of Skyrock Phrase 1, lots 1 through 9?
We will move. Say it.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you, board. Ms. Martha, I need you to get a signature.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Phil.
All right, we'll move right along to 3.3C, Amy Regional Library Updates. Amber Fries.
Hello. Hello. It's great to see you all. It's been too long. Yes. So COVID happened, and we got out of the regular practice of giving reports, so I hope to see you more often. So I want to start off by thanking the Avery County Commissioners and Avery County Government, and our Avery County Morrison Board, which Clayton Harfield is here tonight, so I want to thank him. I have to say, from a professional standpoint, I have just been in awe of Avery County Government. The budget requests we give you year after year, you have approved for us. So your consistency of sending in emailing us and keeping in contact with us. Our board members are just regular and fantastic. They attend meetings, they have great conversation and information. So I feel like we have a great, great support at Avery Morrison Library. So you're really lucky in that we've just finished our community assessment with Avery Morrison Library. We had an open house this summer, so we are going through all of that data. We also just submitted the statistic report to the state library, which is all of the data throughout the system. So I have some information here specifically from Avery patrons related to our open house, and asking them to add information to our five-year plan. Our five-year strategic plan is required by state law that we have to submit every five years to show what our strategy is. So what we found out is that the majority of responses from Avery County patrons was continuing education classes. Second to that was for more physical materials. And third, which was a very big surprise for us, were opportunities for community forums. So, which we found as a surprise being third in what patrons asked for. One of the questions was the library has identified some possible priorities and goals to focus on in the next five years. Responses were in order of first priority to provide welcoming, inviting places with lots of space to gather in small and large groups, as well as individual quiet spaces. This is excellent for our strategic plan, because using the Morrison Fund, which we are so lucky to have at Avery Morrison Library, we will be redoing our entire children's area. So that's very exciting for us. The next was wanting to continue to build strong connections with local organizations and community groups. So most people associate the public library with partnerships throughout the community, and that's consistent with what our patrons want to see as well. Let's see, age range. The majority of the people who participated in this survey were sixty-one and older, which fits our statistical data, which show that the majority of our patrons, that's fifty percent or above, are sixty-one and older. So our survey results were at forty-five percent for sixty-one and older. And what we found is many of these individuals visit our libraries because they're bringing their grandchildren to the libraries. Which library is your home library? We had Avery patrons respond at thirty percent, which was second highest in the region for that information. So that was great. Frequency of visits, thirty-three percent said they visited once a week. So we were really happy to see that, and that's very consistent with our patrons, who we know by name and come in every single week to get their books or participate in programming. Do you feel like your library is friendly and welcoming? This was across the system. Ninety-eight percent said yes. Two percent said it depends on the day, so we'll work on that. What people said they wanted to see the library focus on in the future? Continuing education, more materials, and community forums. So that's something we'll continue to look at. So that is from our community assessment here in Avery. One of the comments we received was Avery County Library has done a wonderful job reaching out to the community, and I and my family have always been welcomed and enjoyed everything they have definitely offered. So Debbie and staff at Avery are the best. So many comments related to that, and of course Debbie and Meredith, I'm so proud of them. Meredith was recently selected by the state and received a fifteen-hundred-dollar scholarship to go to the Association of Rural and Small Libraries Conference, which is based in Kansas. So she just returned from that, so we were very proud of her to be selected. And that's among librarians across the state of North Carolina. So some other statistical data, I think you have a copy of that. That should be the budget document you received, and then the statistical data is on the back. This is what we have to submit each year around August and September. That is what we do at the regional office. Staff know that that is how we're pulling data. We're also creating the budgets we have to submit, making sure we have everything so that we are approved for state aid. So as you can see with that, and just because everyone doesn't have a copy of that, our total library visits, Amy Regional Library system-wide, were seventy-four thousand eight hundred and forty-eight. The previous year, that was forty-eight thousand nine hundred. We really believe that increase to visits was due to the programs. The programs we offered, we received a nonrecurring increase from state aid, and that funding went into books, materials, and programming. We wanted it to specifically impact the people. So our programs offered, last year they were two-hundred-and-seventy-seven. We moved that up to seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine programs. So we were exhausted. I don't know if we will have that many programs again, but people showed up, and we were so happy to have them there. Total program attendance was twelve thousand four hundred and twenty-four. For our summer reading programming, we had over a thousand kids participate in all counties. So that was a really great number. I did want to remind you, too, that eighty-five percent of Avery Mitchell and Yancey County patrons are active library patrons. That is one of the highest numbers in the state. So that is, that is a percentage I'm very proud of. We're also really excited that our technology lending is going so well. That number seems small, one-hundred-and-twenty-six checkouts, but in reality, those hotspots and Chromebooks that we check out to the public, they can be borrowed for three months, and then they can be renewed. If someone is not on a waitlist for them, they can be renewed again for that family, especially if they have children in the household who are school age. So that is a program that is going excellently. We do not have hotspots currently available at Avery Library, they are all checked out. So, and with that, I'm going to tell you the excellent news, that we have been approved a grant from COG, so in collaboration with the Council of Government, as well as the Dogwood Foundation and IEI, which is the Institute of Emerging Issues, which works out of NC State with the Friday Institute. So we received a grant of two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. That is to purchase more laptops, to renew the service on the existing hotspots we have, and then to also hire a digital inclusion librarian. So that librarian will be hired for two years. It's a part-time position, and that person will be having computer classes at each of our library locations, and doing one-on-one using the outreach van with individuals who cannot come to our libraries. This is a need that we are seeing over and again with other organizations who reach out to us and say, "We have some folks who are elderly, who are not able to get out of their house, who still want to have access to use a computer." Giving someone a device is only part of that, because the other essential piece that we haven't been able to provide because of low staffing is to be able to teach someone how to use the computer. So we're really excited about that program, and that just happened. So hopefully we'll be sending some press releases out. And then I have some other excellent information for you, which is, this is a really big deal. So you're the first to know. So state aid, for the first time in history, for this level of increase, we were at fourteen million dollars across the state. We have received an increase. It is now an increase of eighteen million dollars. And that was just approved by the state. I'm sending out thank you cards to our legislators right now. This is a very big deal, because state aid was created to assist regional libraries. It was the reason why it was created. And when Avery County approves our budgets, state aid matches that. It's two-to-one match. So when they do that, that means that we directly benefit with these funds. So as you can imagine, this is something I've worked hard at, at the state level, for quite a bit, and something we've wanted to see for a long time. For it to actually happen is incredible, because it means more access to digital literacy, literacy programs for adults and children, job searching, information retrieval, books, and more. So in North Carolina, regional libraries have been pioneers in sharing resources between counties since nineteen forty. So this is a great win for us. I would say, over time, I have told county commissions, "I keep asking you for funding," and something about it... and something about it feels wrong because we're not getting the increase from the state that we need." So, it was time that we had that, so I'm very appreciative. Um, and that's great information. Um, we have another project we're starting. We just got the information this week. We are partnering with North Carolina Museum of the Arts, and so they'll be sending us monthly activities for kids to do at their library. This was about sculpture, so they're actually using soap to do a sculpture based on this piece of art that they have at the Museum of Art. So, these will be in our libraries for kids to just check out and take with them. So, I wanted to tell you about that because it's new information. And then I'm happy to answer any questions you have, or any concerns you have specific to the budget.
Just one thing, that change in the state budget you were speaking of.
Yes.
The percentage match stays the same. So, uh, if the local funding does not increase, then the dollars will not increase, correct?
That's correct. But, they also, it's a complicated formula. And I happen to be serving on the formula team at the state level, I'm one of eight. And it is complicated for me to understand. They also factor that, that's one piece. The other piece is per capita and economics of the county.
That's what I was going to ask, was, is, is it tied solely to that local money? Or is, because I couldn't see an increase unless it had some other factors in there as well.
Yes. What I will say is the concern for myself, and why I speak up for regional libraries, is because when we see a state aid increase, what you will hear is from municipality libraries who will say, "We don't get a piece of this, we deserve more than this block grant. They've increased funds, how can we get a piece of that?" So, that's something I pay attention to, is because the intention of it is to serve regional areas. So, that's what you have to look for, more money increases, more people want it.
And one other question, before I, the, the meeting room usage is on your statistical, uh, that's seven hundred and twenty, of course, that's regional, regional numbers there.
It is.
My, my, my question was, in our local, in the one here, have we seen any increase in the usage of that meeting space, or new usages for it? Because I, I, I refer a lot of people to them when they're asking for space, and I just try to follow, have, have they actually followed through and utilized that for something different than what it was before?
Yes, the space has been utilized more at Avery Morrison, but not in the way of library-sponsored programming. It has increased with agencies and organizations and clubs meeting there.
Right, because that's what I, where can we go, and I'll refer that to them. And I just want to make sure that's being followed through.
It is, yes, yes, it's increased. And if you ever want numbers specific to Avery, I can certainly discuss that.
Overall, thank you.
Of course.
Anyone else have any question?
Just thank you for what you've done.
Thank you for saying that.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's great to see you.
And we're going to fix the leak.
We are, it's exciting. Can't wait, and I can't wait to see that children's library, excited. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, we've got about three or four more minutes. We'll ask Andre and Trevor Field to come and give us our tax administrations report.
First thing I want to say is, um, my daughter used the summer reading program at the library when she was little, and her grandmother used to take her, so it is a good program, I have to speak up for that. Please accept our collections for the month of September of two million, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Move to approve.
Say it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um, please approve my releases for September of four hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then our, um, revaluation sales for September twenty-twenty-three. We had eighty-nine sales with a ratio of sixty-three percent just for that month. Last year, we had a hundred and eleven sales at sixty-eight percent. Um, all the sales that you see on your list this time are strictly regular, average Andrea Philip Woody houses, just average homes. So, I just wanted you to see the differences in what they're selling for too. So, I'm trying to spread it out a little bit. Then my last three things are property tax commission, um, court cases that I had to work on, and due to the time of court and commissioners' meetings, I had to go ahead and settle what I could to keep us from having to go to Raleigh. There was one, Donald and Diana Hilbig. We settled with them for, let's see, theirs was, their land value was ninety-eight thousand three hundred. We settled for seventy-three-three with a refund of a hundred and five dollars and sixty-two cents. Then, the next one is Kim LaFong. His value was three hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred. We settled at three twenty-five-two. And both of these, they're actually kind of side by side. We went and looked at both of these, um, with a refund amount of a hundred and eleven dollars and eleven cents. And then the last one is Mark and Estelle McLaughlin. Their original value was five ninety-one-four, the mediated value was five sixty-seven-six. This one, we technically create, um, corrected an error and added a debt in it, balanced out. So, we really made no change other than the corrections we made during new construction last year. And their refund is a hundred dollars and fifty-five cents.
All right.
We got one minute. We need no motion.
Um, yeah.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
One minute to spare.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do I hear a motion for us to go out of our regular meeting and go into public hearing for Avery County Transportation Grant Application?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Ms. Dale, all right.
Fine, fine.
Thank you guys for having me today. It's always a pleasure. Okay, we're here today to, uh, get some approvals, uh, and to ask for any public comment for our FY twenty-five, uh, CTP grant, which is Community Transportation. Um, there's two sections to the grant. We have the administrative grant, uh, this year. The amount on that grant is a hundred sixty-three thousand sixty dollars. That covers, uh, some of our administrative, uh, expenses for the year of FY twenty-five. That is a small increase from last year. We have been taking a decrease for the last five years. So, now we have started, uh, showing a little bit of increase from the state, which we are very glad to have. The other part is our capital expenses, and what we have for our capital for FY twenty-five. And, uh, these items go by the state chart, uh, for, uh, replacement. It's all replacement vehicles and, uh, items. We have two lift vans, uh, we have one transit van. Uh, we have a, two of the minivans that we use, lettering and logo for those. Then, we have, uh, a security and surveillance upgrade for our facility that we're requesting. We have found out that we have a couple areas in our parking lot that are not covered by our current cameras and surveillance system. So, we wanted to make sure that we had the areas covered. And, uh, while talking to the companies, they suggested we go ahead and upgrade our current cameras in our system. Price on that is eight thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. We're also requesting our van radios and mobile units and our base units in our building to be upgraded. We have been having some issues, uh, losing communication with some of the vans. And for the safety of the drivers and the riders, we feel like we need to go ahead and, and pursue this to see if we can't get an upgraded system that will increase the safety of our passengers. The total cost for our capital is four hundred eighty-three thousand, seven hundred twenty-four dollars and twenty cents. Um, local match is required for this, so the local cost would be forty-eight thousand, three hundred seventy-two, forty-two for the capital. And it is twenty-four, four fifty-nine for the, the administrative grant. And let me tell you a little bit about what the state is looking for. IMD, which is Integrated Mobility Division with NCDOT, they have missions and goals that they set forth that we need to follow. Their mission statement, to provide leadership for safe, affordable, and innovative multimodal transportation throughout North Carolina. Okay, so their goals, to increase access, eliminate transportation barriers, and ensure all North Carolinians have equal access to opportunities and services. Enhance quality of life, offer a convenient network of, of multimodal, multimodal choices to enhance the quality of life for North Carolinians, and to ensure safety. Those are our big things, and they're also what our, our goals are. So, we try to work along with the state. We are working on, uh, some other transit plans with the state. So, do we have any questions about any of the grants that we're seeking for this year?
Pretty much an old brainer on our part.
We also have a public involvement form that if anybody would like to fill one out, they're laying on the table, uh, over to the left. There are also pens there if you would like to fill out that. It's just a voluntary Title VI public involvement. Uh, we are pursuing a updated Title VI plan, so that's on the works. I'll also be asking for the local share certification and a resolution from the commissioners.
Has our fees, Dale, went up any in the past? When's the last time that they went up?
Our riding fees for the clients? Uh, it has, let's see, we did an update in twenty twenty, I believe, maybe twenty nineteen. I can't remember the date. To ride, air service is open to anybody in Avery County. The fee to ride inside the county is three dollars. That is there and back. So, uh, we do that. Our medical transports go out of county, and, uh, they are different rates depending on the location that the people are going. Going to Boone and back, there's a ten-dollar charge, Spruce Pine, ten dollars. We supplement these costs with our rope grant, which, uh, we do really good with, and with county funds. They're all included in our, our yearly budgets. Uh, we go to, I think Winston is probably twenty dollars. So, it's, it is a very good benefit for the county.
Yes, ma'am.
And I actually have a poem, I was, I'll have to send it to everybody. One of our riders created this poem for us, and it's just very cute. So, uh, so it was, it was, it's nice to get that recognition for our drivers. We have an awesome group of drivers. They, uh, they just know what they need to do, they get it done. I really just enjoy being part of it.
And they're good to go to the rodeo thing and participate?
Yes, our rodeo is a van rodeo, not, not bulls.
But they always bring home trophies.
They do bring home a trophy, so we're always good with that. I won't quit on them until they bring all three trophies in, first, second, and third place.
We have a bunch of good people driving our vans, and you hear a lot of good comments. And it's a big thing for Avery County to have this, you never know when you're going to need it.
This is true. I mean, you know, some people say, "I'm not old enough to ride," has nothing to do with age. This is open to everybody. Our ridership for our jobs in Avery County have increased double from last year. So, we have a lot of people using the transportation to get to work. You know, we still do the regular, the senior center, uh, different things like that. And our, you know, our medicals, those are what we prioritize, is our medical trips. Uh, but the senior center uses our resources. We're just very blessed to get to talk to these people. A lot of faces I don't know, but I know most of the voices.
And if Mr. Sam Ray was here, he'd say, "Thank you for the veterans."
Yes, he would. Yeah, I think our veteran trips have really increased too, uh, since we have Ms. Daniels working in her position. She's really pushing the vets and, and getting them the help that they need.
And that's what we're here for.
Yes.
We good?
I think we're good, if we don't have any public comments.
Hang on a minute, I think we didn't ask if there were any public comments.
Okay.
In the public.
Are there any public comments from Ms. Debbie? All right, do I hear, if you've got anything that has to be approved?
Uh, we have a resolution, and we have to approve the, uh, local, local match.
After we go out of the public hearing.
All right, so do I hear a motion that we go out of our public hearing and go back into our regular session?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and you heard?
Does that need to be in two separate?
You can have one motion provided.
All right, do I hear a motion for the resolution, did you say, Dale?
Yes.
And what's the other name?
The other one is the, let me give you the correct.
Matching funds?
Yeah, it's the matching fund, it's local share certification.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Debbie, thank you for what you do, your hard work, it's appreciated.
You're very welcome, and thank you guys for always supporting us, it is a pleasure.
We see it if we're on, no, don't we, Debbie?
We do, we're, uh, COVID knocked us down a little bit, but we're starting to pick our ridership back up, so getting busy.
And all of us knowing Debbie, she will not stop till she finds.
And all of us knowing Debbie, she will not stop till she finds her money for that garage.
It's on my list for the state, but it got knocked off, so.
All right, we'll move right along to 3.3E, Agreement Between HCCOG and Avery County for Technical Assistance.
So board and Madam Chairman, to boil this down, we got a six hundred thousand dollar grant from the Dogwood Health Trust, and we are going to ask our friends at High Country Council of Governments for assistance with this money. This money, this grant was for opioid fund planning. It's a planning grant. So the High Country Council of Governments, we have a contract that I would like to ask for approval for me to sign. The COG is empowered to provide technical assistance by the North Carolina General Statute, and technical assistance shall consist of assistance with implementation, reporting, and administration of the Avery County Opioids Funding Planning Grant from Dogwood Health Trust and the Opioid Settlement Fund Distribution. Inside your packet, there is a scope of work, and we will be working with Sarah Price, who has helped us with our opioid planning and our meetings. And so when we got the grant from Dogwood, it only made sense to have her to go ahead and facilitate this grant. The time of performance for this grant is September 1st of 2025. And I just need a motion for permission to execute the agreement as it is written.
Do I hear a motion to accept the agreement?
Shall move, second.
All in favor, say aye.
If I may, we've worked with Sarah already on the development of our application and the administration of some of the first round of opioid funding, and her expertise is beyond measure, and her precision. I mean, the amount of detail is, if you look at this scope of work, some of the things that is necessary for reporting on this, environmental scan, sequential intercept mapping analysis, these type of things are really beyond the scope of what we have. So I think this is a wonderful tool that we have in our disposal and a very wise use of these grant funds to allow them to do the thing that they do best.
Shall we say? So we're good?
So we need to vote. We had a motion and a second, but we didn't.
See, I thought we had.
Oh, did we?
You nailed us.
Oh, okay. I missed that one, sorry.
All right, we'll move along. 3.4A, County Manager's Report, Philip Barryer Jr.
So I will start with a broadband update. On the great grant, there is another progress report that is due October 15th. We are very excited that we've got the great grant. The company is working, and I will give a more detailed report at the November meeting when we get the progress report. So we will see how that is going. With the CAB grant, there is a letter in your information items in your packet about the CAB grant. We will still be, we are pledged to be the first county to receive the funding. We will be the guinea pig for the state on the CAB grant. I do need to ask the public for more help. Part of the process is proving to the government that where the gaps are in our broadband. And areas on the mapping show that you may be served, even though that may be by some inadequate provider, and you're not getting the exact service you need, and it's not affordable. We need to hear from those households. The school system, I met with the Career and Technical Education Team at their meeting last week, and they have agreed to help people fill out that survey because it's a little difficult. So they're planning on doing that at a couple of the basketball games and some other events, to have students actually help people fill the survey out. So the more data that we can get in the system, the better all Avery County is going to be as far as proving to the state and to the federal government that Avery County is not served in the capacity in which it needs to be served. So there'll be more on that upcoming. Please do know that this board of commissioners is dedicated to getting every household in this county affordable, reliable internet. Unfortunately, it takes time. Any questions where we are on broadband? Closer every day, but I know it's frustrating for those out there that don't have reliable service. We good? DSS building update. If you've not had an opportunity to drive by, it's simply amazing what happens every two weeks. Sheet Rock is complete on the interior siding on the building. It's three-fourths of the way painted on the exterior. Landscaping is done. They are going to pave before weather hits us. So, and then I've been told nobody gets to drive on the pavement until we open the building. So if you go visit, you'll have to park on the side of the road and walk, but it's very exciting to see what else is going to happen. Project manager over there, his name is Josh, and he says, "Now I dread this part because you're not going to see as much detail happening as quickly." But he said the finished work is going to take a while, but furniture will be delivered the week of December 11th through the 15th. So we're very excited about that. Any questions on our DSS building? But if you haven't had a chance to go by, commissioners and public, you're welcome to go by. It's looking really good. Some general updates. I will say this young lady's name wrong every time, and even when I meet her, but Vivian Swartzer with North Carolina Commerce will be here on behalf of that community development block grant that we got in 2017 for a full audit. That'll be on October the 10th. Again, I have to thank the High Country Council of Governments, Michelle Ball. She says we're prepared and we're ready. So a team will come in and audit our records, and then another team will come in and travel to all the sites which we spent the grant on. So we did replace four homes that year with that grant cycle, and WHAMMY did a lot of improvements, emergency repair, and they will be visiting all that. So we are looking forward to that. As I mentioned earlier, I got to visit the high school last week and spent an hour and a half with the Career Technical Education Team. That's also in your packet, commissioners. Great job that they're doing. Just wonderful things. Logan Burlson is going to hit the gate running, so looking forward to his leadership and what else is going to happen with our school system. As a reminder, the High Country Council of Governments 48th Annual Banquet is this Friday night, October 6th. So please let the clerk know if you plan to attend, if you haven't done.
Well, I've already sent everybody's in.
So too late.
Paid for it, so.
Okay, okay.
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 That's Friday?
Friday night.
Friday night.
What time? Be there at 6:00?
Dinner's at 7:30, so if your traffic's bad.
Got our night to get around.
Hopefully you got an invite from Mayland Community College for the President's Fall Social. That is October the 12th, 5:30 to 7:30, so put that on the calendar. I will be hosting a county managers' meeting for all the towns and the county manager. This is something that we decided, in order for us to work together, we need to know what each other is facing and what we're doing. So I've got a managers' meeting on October 13th from 8 to 10 in this room coming up, and that'll be our first formal meeting. We're going to try to do this at least twice a year. There's also in your information items, there is a partnership for children. They do a great job for Avery County. That is at the Spruce Pine Baptist Church on the 16th of October. So if you have time, everyone has the time to go by and support them. And we will be doing fire extinguisher training for our employees. It's for all employees, and we have a lot of new employees, but that's been something that we've not had time to do since COVID, but that was something very important to the safety committee, so that is the 24th and 25th of this month. And just wanted to make everyone aware of the report I got this morning from EMS on our ambulance services. In September of 2022, there were 291 calls and responses, and this year it increased to 345. Total calls for the 911 communication system for this year was 2,109. So those departments, we can't make it without them. I don't want to have to call them and use them, but it is important.
This year or this month?
This month. Oh, the 2,109 calls, sorry, was this month?
Yeah.
September, the month of September. Is that how many calls came into 911? Sorry, I misled. That's for the month. And with that, if there's not any questions, that is my report.
Philip, I believe that we have a new employee here with us today.
And I think that'll be a good lead in to our next session, 3.4B, for our finance officer, Shapola, because I think he's got some news about a new employee.
And Mr. Caleb, he had a birthday, but he didn't want my baby to know it, but he was supposed to get a whip in.
And we didn't have enough candles.
Yeah, I sent by his dad.
My birthday caused the candle shortage across the nation. I'll save the news to the item number three. How about that? We'll get these first two out of the way, and then we'll go to the news. Item number one, the Department of Social Services has worked with the company to furnish the newly constructed DSS building upon completion. This will supply all furniture and appliances for the entire building, and all furnishings will be purchased on state contract pricing. A portion of this will be reimbursed from the state. Request the board to approve the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay $228,000 and credit fund balance appropriated $228,000.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Thank you, board. Item number two, the JCPC Juvenile Crime Prevention Committee Administration did not use all of their funding for the fiscal year 2223. This has to be paid back to the state, and this is just to move money forward from the previous fiscal year to fiscal year 2324. Request the board to approve the following budget amendment to debit JCPC Administration $881.86 and credit fund balance appropriated $881.86.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Do it, approve, second.
All in favor, say aye.
All right, for the good news, I'm very proud to present we have a new finance team member slash IT, Arizona Grag. She would stand. So thankful to have her as part of our department. She has already hit the ground running, and she's doing a great job, as we knew she would. We're excited to have her as just part of the finance team, and she's just fitting right in. We're thankful for her. And item number three is a resolution that is before you to appoint Arizona Grag as deputy finance officer.
Do I hear a motion to appoint?
So move, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you, board. I appreciate it. Thank you all for allowing me to start the hiring process and find such an eligible candidate. We have all the confidence in the world, please.
Absolutely.
Appreciate y'all.
As do we.
And I've been told to leave her alone, but I told her if they bother her to let me know, so it's going to be a 50/50 there. Okay, thank you, Arizona.
All right, we'll move right along to 3.4C, our county attorney report.
Oh, I just wanted to update the board. I had been asked to prepare a proposed golf cart ordinance for the county, and there is a draft of an ordinance that is included in the packet. There are a couple of things highlighted and the board may want to have input on, specifically whether or not it would be effective during the daylight hours and what those hours would be and some other questions. There had been a question regarding the enforcement of the golf cart ordinance. This would be specifically talking about Goose Hollow Rock Road and Richard Childers Road. I had requested an opinion from the school of government on whether or not the Avery County Sheriff's Department could enforce that if there was a memorandum of agreement between the Land Harbors Police Department and the Sheriff's Department. The school of government seemed to think that that would be allowable, but I did some work of research on it. I found an opinion from the Attorney General's Office, which I've included in your documents, to indicate that that would not be valid. And I had also consulted with the attorney who represents the Sheriff's Department periodically on constitutional law issues, and he was very discouraging about entering into such an agreement. So I can have more information for the board if you want to have it on that issue, but I think that, you know, there are two areas in enforcement. You've got the whole issue of whether or not the county wants to require that any golf carts that are allowed to be inspected and have a permit. So you've got that portion of it, and then you also have the actual enforcement of the ordinance portion. So it's kind of two separate things, but I'm putting the both kind of under enforcement. So, you know, if it is enacted and it's left to the Sheriff's Department, I think the board would probably want some input from the sheriff on whether or not this would require additional manpower and whether or not it's going to be a budget issue for the county.
Can I ask a question? If anything did happen, would liability fall to us in any way?
Well, that's certainly a concern, you know, and I had done a memo for the board, and I had recommended that Philip or someone inquire of the county's liability insurance carrier if there would be an impact for this. It's kind of been my experience that typically they will not say that what the impact will be until there's actually a loss, and then they let you know how much your premium's gone up because there's a loss. So, you know, that may be something that the board wants to explore more and see if they can give the board any type of input about losses other counties or municipalities have faced and what type of effect that's had on the county or municipality's insurance premium.
One other question, if I may. It appears, based on the findings from the Attorney General's Office, the Sheriff's Department is probably not going to be the enforcing entity in this. Is there any guidance as to if that would be responsibility of the special police within the development? Or what would be the enforcement?
You're talking about two different areas. So if you're talking about just on Goose Hollow and Richard Childers Road, then that is going to have to be Sheriff's Department or Highway Patrol. People who are charged with DWI or that type of thing.
Does it not fall under Highway Patrol according to the statute?
Enforcement of the local ordinance?
No enforcement of state law?
Yeah, yeah, but to go back to the rest of your question, Land Harbors Police would be, could enforce things within Land Harbor. They cannot enforce on the state roads. That's the issue, because those roads are state roads.
So your enforcement is...
But the whole thing is, is there, people would be crossing from one side of Land Harbor to the other, so they'd be back and forth all the time.
So your enforcement on the state roads will be the Highway Patrol?
Or the Sheriff's Department?
The Sheriff's Department. And sheriff's department. Enforcement everywhere else will be Land Harbors Police.
And then you have the whole issue of who's going to issue permits and inspect the carts.
Would fall to the sheriff's department or highway patrol or somebody?
Wouldn't be the highway patrol. They aren't going to do it.
Yep, in the sheriff's department.
It would typically be the sheriff's department.
And so you're talking about possibly, you do that, you're talking about possibly more manpower for the sheriff's department to...
And you can tie...
Possibility, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, possibly, and you can tie the cost of people who want a permit, you can tie that cost to the cost of the permit. Yeah, I had looked at several different, it's usually towns that do this on the coast. And, you know, I found one town that charged a permit fee of $125 a year to help defray the cost, the necessary cost of that. And then I found another one that did $25 a year. So there's a range there that, you know, different areas have found helps them defray that cost.
So if we, if it comes down to the point that the sheriff's office has to issue the permits, then any fees would be paid to the sheriff's office at that point in time?
Yes. And I will just let the board know that if the board decides to proceed with this at any point in time, this will have to be voted on at two meetings. So there are a lot of, a lot of issues the board may want some more information on before deciding to place it on the agenda for vote.
So our, our option at this point is if we're going to research this further, we do not need to move on it, we don't need to table it or move it forward at this point. We can merely keep it for discussion if we brought up at a later date?
I think at this point, if the board wants the manager or someone in the manager's office to contact the insurance carrier, that would certainly be something that some information the board would need before deciding whether or not to proceed. And then the manager may also need to contact the sheriff to actually get the input from the sheriff about the enforcement arm of it. I had spoken to the sheriff about this previously, but that was before the question was answered about whether or not Land Harbor Police could enforce it. So those are, those are the things that I think would need to be, be addressed and then kind of nail down the whole issue of whether or not permits would be required. You know, if you have a permitting process, it's going to, there's going to be someone who's going to have to look at the carts and decide if they're roadworthy, if you will, if they meet certain safety standards that the board may choose to put in the ordinance.
So we don't need to enact any motion, any movement today?
No, I think it's just really for, for discussion today.
Okay, that's why I just want to be sure we don't need to...
Biggest things will be moved forward. For one of the bigger things.
So if it's, I guess, agreeable to the board, I can get together with Mr. Barry, and we can contact the insurance carrier and follow up with sheriff on those issues.
Yes.
I think so.
What was the age limit going to be, Michelle, on this?
I think what the, it's my understanding what the county was looking at was 18.
18.
18. You can make it a licensed driver at the age of 16, but I think the county was looking at 18 as the age threshold. And then, of course, there were several requirements in there about the condition of the carts. The proposed ordinance does have an inspection process and a permitting process set up by the sheriff, and it does require that individuals be licensed, that they have proof of insurance before they get a permit, that the carts have certain safety equipment like headlights, turn lights, taillights, brake lights, you know, that type of thing. So those were all in the proposed draft that the board considered.
It might be a dumb question, but I'm always getting it. If they were incorporated and had a town council and a police force, would that change anything as far as that state road goes?
It wouldn't be in front of us.
Well, they could, they could have their own. Beach Mountain has an ordinance for golf carts within the limits of Beach Mountain. And it is administered by the Beach Police Department. So if Land Harbor were incorporated, they could certainly do that within the boundaries of their incorporated area.
I could go say I don't think...
Yeah. Kind of wild looking.
So that, that was the information that I really had for the board. I don't have anything that the board needs to act on at this time.
All right, we'll move right along to 3.5, staff reports and requests.
Will you not have any?
All right.
So Ms. Martha, on the Whammy Community Action, she was, something come up and she just couldn't make it. She had texted Phillip that she could not make it. So we'll schedule, schedule her updates at another time.
All right, 3.6, our closed session, did we have?
I do have matters we're going to consider in closed session, and I believe that the court has provided you with that safety decree, so that going into closed session. It was go to closed session for attorney-client privilege would be the exception that we would be looking at, and personnel, personnel matters, yes.
So that comes in under GS, run forward through.
Good to see y'all.
It's covered by me, I'm gonna leave. Mike was already over the conversion.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Possibly. I'll call you, I'll take you.
Just a second, let me make sure Venus is close. That one here. Okay, we're live.
Ready to go? All right, we've come out closed session. No vote was taken and we'll go back into our regular session. And I don't, we don't have anything else.
3.7.
Oh, the minutes, yeah, there's the empty spot. Do I hear a motion that we approve the minutes for August the 7th, 2023 closed session and September the 5th, 2023 regular session?
So moved, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
There is under agenda consent items. The rope grant for Amber Transportation. That one does not require a Holy Care. She just wanted to make sure that y'all were aware that she was putting in for the rope grant. And it was in the agenda consent items.
All right. Is that everything?
We adopt that by consent.
All right, we will. We will adopt the rope grant by consent.
Is there any more? There's some more in agenda consent items. Thank you. There's some lineups, so just...
Transfers and...
So everything in?
Everything, it's in the consent items.
Yep.
Is adopted by consent?
Is adopted by consent. So...
Our next meeting is the 16th.
The next meeting is scheduled for the 16th. And if that's all, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
All in favor, go on. Thank everybody for everything they do.
Thank you.
Especially for us.